Good afternoon. I want to thank everyone for their flexibility and willingness to take time out of your schedules, and I'm sure they're pretty busy at this time of the year, to attend the special meeting of the Civilian Police Review Board. As suggested in the notice that went out to the board, and as you may have already learned from media reports, questions regarding whether recent public statements and actions by one of our board members, one of the members' removal, have been raised. The special meeting has been called to provide an opportunity for the board to consider these matters. Board members have each been provided with copies of statements made by Board Member Aragon on his public Facebook and Twitter pages. These statements comment negatively upon the role played by the Columbus Division of Police and the events surrounding the cancellation of the Holly Drag Storytime event at the Red Oak Community School, which was to take place on December 3, 2022. Additionally, each of you either attended or unavailable to attend have had the opportunity to subsequently view a video recording of the December 6 Civilian Police Review Board meeting. During the December regular meeting, which took place just a few days after the events, Member Aragon raised the question of whether the board might seek to open an investigation into these matters. Member Aragon, in making the request, did not disclose the fact of his prior public postings, and as such, the board was not aware of the anti-CPD statements having been made. Member Aragon also did not disclose during the December meeting that he considered himself to be a member of the community safety and security team for the Holly Drag event. Having raised allegations of misconduct by members of the Division of Police at the event, Member Aragon did not refrain from participating further in the board deliberation over the matter. Additionally, while Member Aragon made clear that he considers himself to be a member of the community who was negatively impacted by the events, he did not disclose to the board that he had been personally involved as a member of the community safety and security team for the event. The city code states that in order for a board member to be removed, a two-thirds vote of the seated board is required to make such a recommendation to the mayor. Board members may only be removed for inefficiency, neglect of duty, or malfeasance in office. As part of our charter and statutory duties, we are required to follow the bylaws, standards of professional conduct, and pledge of ethical conduct. Board Member Aragon was duly appointed and has executed the pledge of ethical conduct, agreeing to uphold his obligation as a member of this board. I have called the special meeting to afford the members of the board an opportunity to discuss these important personnel matters in executive session. Because Member Aragon has a personal interest in his position on the board, he has an actual conflict of interests which prohibits his participation in any board action on these matters. That said, Member Aragon has been duly noticed of the time, place, and purpose of this meeting, and if Member Aragon wishes to make a statement now, prior to the board adjourning into executive session, this would be an opportunity to do so. Mr. Aragon, would you like to make a statement?
Sure. Thank you. I have a simple goal in life, and that is to elevate the voices and the spectacular talent and stories of our communities. I want to spend the rest of my life here on earth actually being part of a final stand of sorts. I will hold the line down for our younger Americans. Like them, I stand against the opposition of white supremacy and its fascist principles. I'm the type of person that believes that right is right, and that's a full stop. I aspire to always be an honest, worthy representation for my community. I accepted this board position for a few reasons. I wanted to represent and be a living testament to the abuse my community has suffered at the hands of the police. I wanted to do my part to help save Black trans lives. Finally, I wanted to see firsthand if this board was set up to make a difference. I wanted to do my two years happy as a clam and having been chosen to participate in my civic, in a civic system for the very first time. I'm kind of a geek, I will admit. I'm the type of person that gets excited when, you know, they get the summonings to go and be on an actual jury. So this was sort of the same thing for me. I didn't even make it two years. I can emphatically say that this board won't make a difference. Instead of doing real work for the citizens of the city, we were buried training, buried in training after training. It wasn't lost on me that most of the training was propaganda presented to many of the boards that were still on the fence in hopes of sympathy. No, if it wasn't that, we were further explained our legal powers and duties. I'm on the spectrum, and I have a problem with two things. I hate having to reread something that I've learned once before, and I don't like being lied to. I've been swimming against the stream for quite some time. I don't care about convention, or decorum, or pretension. When human lives are at stake, I'm not a politician. I actually want to help my community. So your decision here today forces my community to do what we have always done, which is solve these problems for ourselves. So I have your meeting. Just wait. It's going to be wild. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Aragon. In light of all that has been presented today, do I have a motion to go into executive session to consider the removal of Member Aragon from the Civilian Police Review Board?
I have a quick question.
Yes?
In terms of moving into executive session, I just wanted to get some clarity on, in terms of discussing a personnel matter, prior to us moving into executive session, is there a set of things that we can discuss? The concerns that I have about executive session here is just the fact of related to personnel matter. My understanding was that it's related to public official, but I don't know how that relates to volunteer members of the review board. That's just the only kind of question for clarification that I had.
We have the authority to go into executive session on a personnel matter involving a board member.
Okay.
Okay? And do keep in mind that we will not be able to vote on anything in executive session. We will come back into public session and discussion, and discussion before the vote, if there is to be a vote.
Perfect.
Okay? So I have asked for a motion. Did someone move?
Someone moved.
Second, I need a verbal vote, a verbal...
Second, the motion.
Second, there now needs to be a roll call of the members to permit us to go into executive session.
Mark Flewarty.
Yes.
Janet Jackson.
Yes.
Dr. Chanel Jones.
Yes.
Willard McIntosh.
Yes.
Pastor Rich Nathan.
Yes.
Kyle Strickland.
Yes.
Mary Younger.
Yes.
Reverend Tatum.
Reverend Tatum is in here. To make it easier for those of you who are in the room, rather than asking you to leave, and this is the only room in this building, the members of the board will actually remove themselves and go next door to another building to go into executive session, then we will come back here for reopening the public session. We are back on the record for the special meeting of the Civilian Police Review Board, called to discuss the potential removal of Member Aragon in light of the reasons provided at the start of the meeting. And I'm not going to issue an apology to those of you who are still here. I know we had thought this meeting might go from 4 until 5:30, but we needed to have that discussion, and I will tell you that it is our plan to continue this meeting for some period of time. I'll leave it at that. The board has just concluded its executive session, and we are now back in open session. Do I have a motion regarding Member Aragon's removal?
Madam Chair, I motion that Mr. Aragon be removed from the civilian review board for neglect of duty.
And is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. At this point, the chair will open the meeting for a discussion from the board before the vote. Mr. Strickland?
So yeah, I mean, I think one of the conversations that I think the civilian review board has to face is how we present ourselves to the public and what that looks like. And there are individual members. We all come in here with our various perspectives, our various biases, but at the end of the day, when we review cases, when we review what's before us, we have to be fair, objective, and impartial on a set of decisions. I will say that as a member of the civilian review board work group, and now as the civilian review board member of this body, I understand that a lot of folks have a lot of opinions about what this board should or should not be, whether we operate as kind of this judicial body where we all kind of have our individual opinions and hold those in our own perspectives, or whether we have diverse voices and perspectives, even if you might disagree. And I think that, you know, somebody's individual comments, and we have to be clear about what a social media policy is, and right now, I do not believe that this board has truly drafted and agreed upon what a social media policy looks like moving forward. And I think that is something, moving forward, we should have more clarity on, especially as we start as a collective, as a body, moving forward. Secondarily, I think one of the questions that I have is if this board determines that certain statements were a violation of our policies and procedures. I think we can make that determination, but the second question is, are we going to take the step, a big action, to actually call for the removal of a member of this board, a duly appointed member of this board because of a perception of neglect of duty? I think that is a big jump. It is something that I would be against. I don't think that is something that we should be doing as a board, as a body. I do think we need to have conversations about how we conduct ourselves in terms of what that, how personal statements and comments on personal statements can reflect on the rest of the board, and it's important for us to make clear that those statements cannot interfere with our ability to operate as a board, to be objective, fair, and impartial at the end of the day. But there's a reason we have 11 review board members. Everybody has diverse perspectives, diverse ideas, and we're going to come at things differently. We need to have voices of all kinds to come to this review board. I will say, though, as a board and as individual members, it is up to us to uphold the professional standards of being objective, being impartial, and not letting that go into our own biases and going into a set of decisions that we make. And so that part is unclear, that part is clear to me. I mean, if you have biases that you can't check, then you shouldn't be serving on the board. But if you have biases and say that, "I understand my biases, I understand my perspectives, and I acknowledge those, and I will have a set of guardrails in place to ensure that those don't interfere with my decisions," that's a different story. And that's, I think, how we should conduct ourselves moving forward. But I think a big action for us to remove a member for neglect of duty, I just don't see it rising to the occasion where I would call for removal.
And let me, this is just a clarification, potentially going back to the motion. What would happen here, it would be a recommendation from this board to be sent to the mayor for removal. We don't have the authority to remove. It is, it would be the mayor, and I don't know if this is before his, after his consultation with city council, but there are steps in this process, and that's all that I wanted to clarify. So, Mr. Flewarty, in your motion, and I'm trying to recall...
I have a question.
Excuse me. Mr. Flewarty, was it clear in your motion that your recommendation was to recommend to the mayor that Mr. Aragon be removed?
If there is any confusion, Chair Jackson, yes, that is my motion that we recommend to the mayor for removal.
And then I would turn to General Counsel. Am I correct that that is, in fact, the procedure that we're following here?
That's correct, Chair.
All right. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Aragon.
All right. I guess I'd like to ask the General Counsel, if the mayor's already asked for my removal from this board, what is the point of having this board send some pointless sort of recommendation to him?
Member Aragon, I would go back and remind you that at this point in time, the board is discussing this matter, but you actually have an actual conflict of interest, so you shouldn't be participating in the conversation. You're welcome to be here. It's open to the public, but you have a direct interest in whether or not you stay on the board.
If I could, just to provide some clarity, because I do want to draw a distinction between what Board Member Aragon just referenced and the mayor calling for removal versus what the board has just discussed. So part of what the board has focused on are what our duties and obligations are from our ethical standpoint, from our professional conduct standards, from our rules and regulations. And so to draw some distinction as well, because I hear Board Member Strickland's focus on the bias and impartiality, and while that was a part of our discussion, Mr. Aragon's statements, both on social media and here today, have had the board discuss whether impartiality is possible. So that is one issue. A separate issue is also the failure to disclose. At our last meeting, Mr. Aragon asked the board to initiate a complaint with the Inspector General's office, but did not disclose at that time that he was a firsthand, a person with firsthand knowledge, so was there at the event in question, at the issue in question, and did not disclose that while attempting to get the board to vote on that. And so that, those are two separate things. Both our professional code of conduct, our rules and regulations, our bylaws, all reference the duty to disclose and the duty to recuse, neither of which happened. So just for clarity purposes, the board's discussion was not in response to the mayor. It was, here are things that happened, and as a board, we discussed whether those things rise to the level of a recommendation.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I may be recognized. I do want to go back to this issue of the mayor's statement versus our decision, or my decision. I can't speak for everyone else because we haven't taken a formal vote yet, but I make my decisions for myself. The mayor does not influence my decision one way or the other. I base my decision on the evidence that was presented to me, what I've read with my own eyes, and what we signed when we first came on this board about being unbiased and those things, and about how we should conduct us. We had a great discussion about how we should conduct ourselves as board members, and everyone around this table has a certain amount of biases. I don't care who we are, but when I come into these meetings, I check those biases at the door. When I'm out there in society, and I get questions all the time about particular things pertaining to this board, some things I cannot talk about, and I have to watch how I conduct myself, because guess what? If I don't conduct myself properly, it not only just affects Tatum, but it also affects this board, which I am a part of. So, you know, and I agreed, and I signed to that, so therefore, you know, I have to uphold that. So I just wanted to make sure that I got that point across.
Thank you. Other board members?
Well, I'll just say that I understand exactly what Kyle is saying, however, the comments that were made prior, earlier today, like I said in our discussions, confused me. So I was under the impression that Member Aragon no longer wanted to be a part of the board. So I just want to make that clear. I was, so I was confused. I thought I was going to hear an apology or an explanation as to maybe what you meant as opposed to what you said in the heat of the moment. So I went into this, at least upstairs, I was confused. So that's kind of where I'm at now. But if that's, if what he said is going to affect the integrity of the board and cause confusion, then we have to do what we have to do.
Ms. Younger?
I think that it's very important that our board maintain its credibility. We were, we're here because the citizens of Columbus voted for us. They want us here, and they want us to, and the police department are part of the citizens of the city of Columbus. So we, we are diverse, and we come from different backgrounds, but those different backgrounds will help us to review our cases, the cases that come before us, that are investigated by the inspector general, and will help us make better decisions, but we have to treat the Columbus Police Department the same as we do anyone else. We have to review those cases as, with an open mind, and treat everyone equally. We can't have a bias or a prejudice against anyone. We're a quasi-judicial body, and we don't come here representing any specific group. That's...
Just a moment. I want to give all other board members the opportunity to speak before I come back to someone who has already spoken. Pastor Nathan?
I just want to second what Reverend Tatum said, and that is that my decision today and comments that I made in executive session as well as this public meeting are not in response to the mayor's call, whether the mayor called for Mr. Aragon's removal or not. This was brought to my attention by our board chair, but I don't believe that in, in the eyes of this whole community, that this board can continue to have a member on the board who publicly said, "F the police" in multiple social media posts, as well as today. Essentially, Mr. Aragon, you drew a line in the sand, you know, by your public statements before our executive session, saying, "Here's where I am, this is who I am, take it or leave it." And that communicated to me, you know, a lack of objectivity and a lack, and a statement that I'm not, I'm not planning to be objective, I'm not planning to be unbiased. So in response to Mr. Strickland's statements, I think we all come with our biases. I entirely believe that every human being, based upon our social location, has biases. We see things differently. We represent the community differently, but we must check our biases at the door, and we must be willing to say that I'm not coming in with a hostility toward the police or an advocacy for the police. I'm not coming in with a hostility toward a particular portion of the community or advocacy for that portion of the community. And so objectivity is essential in terms of our credibility with the community, that the community expects that these cases are going to be handled in an unbiased way, and your public statements have, have raised an enormous question mark for me that whether you could be unbiased, so.
Thank you. Any other members of the board who haven't spoken?
Well, I haven't spoken yet, and so I would just like to just add to the conversation that there is something to be said, and I said this prior to, about diversity of thought and opinion, but with that being said, we all sign a code of ethical conduct. We all have bylaws. We have a set of documents that we all agree to adhere to, especially when performing our duties on, on this board, and I do agree with Kyle that if we did have a social media policy, this would be very, very much more clear-cut than what it is now. But with all that being said, there are, this is a public-facing body. We all did sign those documents to say we would behave in a certain manner, that we would represent the board, that we would show impartiality, fairness, that we would set our biases to the side when it comes to conducting ourselves in this role and basically in general. And so with that, you know, there was a violation of that code of ethical conduct that we all did agree to, and it's really, really unfortunate because, again, we want the diverse perspectives to be represented on the board, and we all represent our various communities, and we have our lived experiences that impact our lives. And so I just think it's an unfortunate situation that we're even in this position to have to take this vote today, because I'd rather be Christmas shopping right now.
That's right.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Again, I believe everyone has spoken, and Mr. Strickland, you had another comment or question?
Yeah. So I agree. I mean, this is a special meeting, and everybody was flexible to get here, and I'm grateful for that. I mean, but, you know, this does, this is an important discussion. I mean, there will come a time when this review board is going to have to address these types of matters, and this potentially will occur again in the future in other types of situations and ways. And so, you know, I just, as a public-facing body that's supposed to be representative of the community, providing different perspectives and hearing about what the community thinks, how the civilian review board should be operating, I mean, we haven't even gone through the first set of cases yet as, as a review board body in terms of discussing it publicly. And so, you know, I think this is a different situation if Mr. Aragon was a member of, a board member, Aragon was a member of the inspector general's office, like if he were, if he were an investigator, I think this is a different story. But there are processes in place to ensure that we have checks against the biases that we hold. One of those processes, I agree, is the Board of Ethics, making sure that we have our policies in place. That's one thing. The other process we have in place is that you have a team of investigators separately in the IG's office that do investigations, they do the fact-finding, and then that report is presented to individual, or that report is presented to the review board, and then we have teams, we have subcommittees, three or more members or so, I think, is the total, and that subcommittee will discuss among their, their group, and this is, can be in a public hearing, it's in a public hearing, about those cases before them. You have two out of three members who can vote one particular way on how they want to move forward as a board. So I want to be very clear that there are checks in place on top of the individual, individual steps that we bring, come to the table with, ensuring that we sign these documents, but then additional checks as a review body to ensure that we are remaining fair and impartial as a board. And so to make a decision to remove a board member based on, to make, make a recommendation to remove a board member and then to have that presented to city council based on a violation of policies and of neglect of duty without maybe having other steps in place, like do we have a process, a discipline process, or a reprimand process if somebody violates these terms? I don't think we have that process in place. I think this is, this moment warrants that type of process. If there's a violation, then there should be a process that we follow, and then if we're talking about repeated violations, then I think you've got a situation in which there's a removal. Now, if this were a case of malfeasance, which I do not believe this rises to, and that's not what the recommendation was, I think we have a different story. A situation of malfeasant, malfeasance to me seems like it could be removal, but a neglect of duty charge without us even having a discussion about that with the board member themselves, to me, seems like an odd recommendation for us to make. I mean, we haven't even talked to Mr. Aragon as a, as a board, as a collective, so that to me, the call for removal, just, I don't think we have the policies in place right now, and that's understandable because we're a working board, but that is a big action that sets a precedent that I just don't think we should, we should move forward on.
All right. Anything further? Anything further? Just a couple of comments. I have frequently said since we were first convened as a board that we would be in a learning process. And to your last point, Mr. Strickland, we will have the ability, after taking today's actions, at future meetings, to go back to look to see if things should be changed. But this is before us today. And then we can see if we can add in other steps or whatever, if the board so chooses to, not based on just one board member's opinion, but collectively what we believe on. I am prepared to, are there any other comments?
I didn't know there was going to be any other comments.
Yes, Mrs. Strickland?
Thank you. So now I'm just going to speak directly to board members here. I really hope that the decision we make moving forward, I really do want to, and I know we've all thought carefully about it and are thinking carefully about it, and this is a hard decision to make, but to think about the type of board that we can showcase moving forward, that when we face a decision like this, when there's a decision like this, when people disagree on a set of things, that we as a board, as a collective, as a body, can put in processes in place to actually set standards that we vote and agree on, because we haven't done them all yet, about what we do in these types of situations. And I think it is a rash decision for us to make that decision today for removal prior to us even setting forth policies for reprimanding or any sort of violation. So that, that is my perspective. You may not, you may disagree with the set of things that have been done, instead of actions, but for us to make that decision prior to, I mean, we haven't really taken public comment. I mean, there will be those opportunities if we recommend this moving forward, and city council can weigh in, all sorts of things like that. But at the end of the day, I think as a board, this is a tough decision. We're learning a lot, but I would recommend either a no vote or abstaining from this decision. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we all accepted the responsibility of coming to this board to represent the best interest of the public. Credibility in any investigation is of the utmost importance, to make sure there is no bias shown. That is what we are charged with. It is a very high calling. It's not easy. It's not easy being here to discuss the future of a fellow board member who I've worked with personally. It is not easy, Mr. Strickland, that is for sure. But once your credibility is gone, unfortunately, it is gone. And that is a decision that, you know, other people will make besides us, because there are processes in place. We are not the final authority. We are just a recommendation. So with that, Madam Chair, I call for the question.
Bonnie directly.
Madam Chair, I've called for the question.
Mr. Strickland? I think you have, you have shared your views on everything that has come before us. So do you want to specifically discuss credibility?
I mean, the credibility question, I do think it calls into question the credibility and independence of this board to be able to make a decision, that we are credible as an independent body, and...
Madam Chair, under Robert's...
The question...
No, under Robert's rules of order, I've called for the question.
Any further discussion? The board, the chair will now indicate that the discussion has concluded and will call for the vote. And once again, this is a roll call vote.
Brooke Burns?
Yes.
Mark Fluharty?
Yes.
Janet Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Willard McIntosh?
Yes.
Pastor Rich Nathan?
Yes.
Kyle Strickland?
No.
Mary Younger?
Yes.
That's it?
Did not get the vote.
Oh, sorry. Charles Tatum?
Yes.
The motion passes. This matter will be referred, or the recommendation for removal of Mr. Aragon will be sent to the mayor. This was the only purpose of this meeting called for today. Also, the motion to adjourn?
Some of...
Second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. We are adjourned. Thank you, thank you, thank you.